Your laptop plugged in?
So we'll guess we start this like a regular meeting then, declare forum, regular agenda.
Yep, Mr. Mario.
Alright, so we can get started now. So. I don't think it's gonna be changed the agenda.
Nope.
Take a second.
In all of ours.
Alright, so we'll start that, Jay.
Okay, well, thank you guys for all taking time to come out. This has been a project that's been going on for relatively almost three years now. So i- it's been a work in the making. To give you guys kind of idea how I'm hoping to work through this, put it together a PowerPoint that's gonna kind of run down some of the biggest changes, give you a little background, history of how this came to be. And then there's a couple topics that I've had some conversations with people that I know we want to talk about. Those probably including accessory structures and signs. And then I'm kind of just gonna open it up to where are some people's concerns and stuff. Obviously, if you haven't made it through, that's alright. We're still in public comment right now till May 5th, but I want to try and get as much information to you guys as we can tonight and get people at least in a good position to be happy where this is at. And then we'll look forward to getting adoptions done towards the beginning of the summer, but there's no decision being made tonight. There's no motion that I'm gonna ask for you to get done. This is a hundred percent workshop format that we're just gonna try and and kind of work through some concerns that people have. And we'll kind of go from there. So, quick, like I said, we'll talk about backgrounds, a little bit about the ordinance. There's a little video that I realized probably a little too small that the consultants put together is kind of a intro to the layout of what the ordinance is, go over major questions and then kind of get into our major changes, then I get into the questions. Quick little background, the request for proposal for this project was issued by the city in October 2020. We had six firms that responded to that RFP and a gift of love sir was selected as the city's consultant in March 2021. Had some questions about what public outreach looked like in the beginning. This was before I got here, but from all the information I had on file, a survey conducted between April and May of 2021, and that was open to all builders, residents, developers, business owners. There was a project website that was established for this that contained all the pertinent information and recent drafts as they came out to to view. The consultants regularly attended and provided updates to the planning and zoning commission kind of in the beginning when this process kicked off. They held a public open house from December 9th 2021. And then just as of last week, we kicked the ordinance out on all our socials, the city website and stuff for public comment. I haven't received any comments at this point, but that is out there for people to start viewing what is the the semifinal draft of this. So why the update and why we went through it? The main reasons we're implementing the Horus 2045 comprehensive plan, regulate development based on updated case line current planning practices, and we're trying to make this code more user friendly because right now it's just kind of a PDF. It's not really searchable, not really interactive. So this is the video. I apologize if it's hard to see, but this is just something they kind of threw together. And this is the what they call clear zoning is their their patented style that they do. So we'll go through kind of the major changes. The the first one you guys probably notices is the sheer size. We went through a hundred from a hundred and fifty-six pages to three hundred and two. A lot of that is our ordinance has been touched really since 2003. We have twenty years of backlog and things that have changed, practices have changed, case law that's been updated. And then just sheer detail into how we want the city to look when it grows that have all been included to this. The next is zoning district reconfiguration and standards. The first kind of thing you'll notice is a reclassification and consolidation of some of the current ordinances. The new zoning proposal that you'll see there consists of sixteen new districts and that which will place the current districts we have. So by the time of the adoption, this will essentially rezone the entire city. I know there was some comments about the map being updated that A gives an idea of how long this has been a process. And B, that is in the works. I have a list of corrections and changes that need to be done to make that that map up or map up to date. The nature of those districts, they do look different, but the the zones themselves, they're relatively the same in nature. And when it goes into the different zoning changes, we also look for where it's allowing for your specific zones and uses within those specified areas per the comprehensive plan. That's one thing to kind of keep in mind. This is all based off the comprehensive plan that was approved in 2019. The future land use map currently identifies the residential suburban compact development urban as the primary residential designations. And within that comprehensive plan, there's a table that details the compatible zoning for each district, right? So when we get into like areas that are community focused or we get into even the mixed use, there's a series of zones that are compatible with that use. So when someone comes to apply for it, they're usually picking one or two zones out of that several. What this did was consolidate those areas to where you have a mixture of uses permitted in the zone. So then we end up getting the uses that were intended for that area per the comp plan. And then just kind of an update overall to the zoning and I kind of have a list of things that updating our zoning is meant to do and what updating zoning districts is meant to do. Implement the master plan, shape inviting walkable places. One probably run into when we get those inflexible or just that old zoning regulations is it can discourage redevelopment. It also increases the rezoning and variance requests that we see, and I know we've seen quite a few of those here in the last few months. And then ties together that that long range plan using that regulatory tools zoning. Process is another big one that finally got updated there. There is a large expansion to the information that's gonna be required for Platts, which is gonna be helpful not only for staff review, but it's gonna be helpful for decision making as well. We have a relatively basic platform now, but this will will increase that tenfold. We expand regulations for stand and standards for conditional use permits. I think right now we have a couple paragraphs. There's really no end in sight for how long it can take them to do a can or to complete that condition use permit or start that use. There's also not a way for us right now to revoke that either. So this breaks into a standard of if they're not doing what they're supposed to do, what they're approved to do. We also have a revocation clause that we can then tackle with that as well, which is gonna help for enforcement along the way. Nonconforming lots and uses. I think right now, again, we only have about a paragraph in terms and it only refers to nonconforming uses. There's not performing lots in the world. There's not pouring buildings. And then there's combinations of those and there's federal case law when it comes to nonconforming uses and lots and buildings that we've relatively been ignoring within our own ordinance. So this brings us up to speed in what's going on in that world and allows for us to actually be able to maneuver in and out with those nonconforming uses and what we can allow, what's allowed to remain. How long it can be allowed to remain. And then it's also set up to where existing uses that are gonna get rezoned with this approval aren't necessarily gonna be impact. Typically, when you're nonconforming use in building, you can continue as long as you want, but you can't really expand. This kind of has a clause that protects those existing uses from being pushed out because the district is changing. Basically allows them to thrive the way they've been thriving, and there's really not much more to say about that. It also creates a process for rezones as well. Currently, we don't really have one. It's just something that happens and mainly that's because everyone feels the need to rezone it by updating our zoning, hopefully reduce the amount of reasons because whether we know it or not, the rezone, the zoning map of the city actually isn't supposed to change every two weeks because an application comes forward. It also sets standards for rezoning too, whether it's an impact to city services, whether the roads can handle potential uses on it. We actually get a little more grit for decision making in terms of should this be rezoned? Does it necessarily have to rezone or are they rezoning because our ordinance is deficient in a certain area? And so it kind of allows those questions similar to what we see with conditional use permits and everything like that, where they have to answer those questions in order for us to say, yeah, rezoning is a good idea. It creates a process for future land use map modification. Again, another document that really shouldn't change. We should visit it quite often. But it shouldn't be part of a just a standard part of an application. We set up with this one that we can't review future land use map modifications except for once a year. Which then gets for staff for us to review how our policies are working within this comprehensive plan once a year. It kind of sets up a internal timeline for us to do a wellness check on how our policies are directing growth within the comprehensive plan. And then we also have a new use with temporary uses which could be used for roadside food stands, some different little economic development things that can come through. And that allows us for the rate or allows a regulation for that as well. Site and building design standards are another big one that has increased quite a bit. Updated parking regulations, we've increased our opportunities for shared parking, parking reduction, land banking. Parking lots are expensive to build. And so anytime that we can figure out a way to share parking, we'll still not overparking a site. I'm gonna push a hundred percent because that's one of the number one deterrents for why a mon pot shop's not gonna open up or rebuild in a building because of that expense of maintenance of that parking lot as well. So it allows for some flexibility for all bodies here to make some decisions that we can actually be a little more accommodating to the the price of of parking. It also gonna require pedestrian accommodations. We don't necessarily require that either through parking lots, whether that be sidewalks through parking lots, bicycle parking. We set up standards for lighting now, which is meant to not really affect people adjacent to lighting. It requests requires them to stay within their sight of their lighting and and avoid the bleed over. Which we have, I think, is starting to be kind of a concern as we get more of these commercial developments popping up. Large emphasis in in site design was placed in the buffers and increasing green space. There's a table in in the new ordinance that requires different types of buffers for different uses depending on what district they're available so are next to. So we'll actually start to build vegetative buffers that will create separation between, you know, your commercially and your residential. And now that's kind of the concern is how does that transition? Well, this offers that ability to provide that transition and what that is and will end up looking like. And then it also creates our landscaping standard no longer based on a point system, which we've seen eaten up time and time again with just a series of trees, which are great. But it also then breaks out every, you know, twenty-five feet, there has to be a tree in one of those green space buffers. Every five feet, there has to be a series of shrubs. So it expands the different types of planting that's gonna be required in some of these green spaces, which will help towards that that beautification process that I know we're all looking for. Building appearance is another one that is a big change in this as well, not only just for commercial, industrial, residential as well. Four dash four point eight within the ordinance does restrict the ability to copy and paste the same house over and over again. Which is gonna eliminate a lot of the cookie cutter disgruntledness that we all see, especially as you go up County Road seventeen. There's a series of elements that at least a minimum of two must be different before we approve a house to be built. That will be tracked through a GIS tracker that I'm currently building right now. So as permits go through, and that way we're able to approve or deny a house based on that design. It's not meant to eliminate, you know, the homeowner's choice of what they want the house, but it is it is an appeal thing. So we're not getting the same same layout over and over. And that, you know, it could be simple as the type of siding and adjusting that grad setback. So there's variance in or in that line, that line of sight. And then the next final thing kind of in the big changes, apologize for that, is the the complete street design standard, which includes the right of way with road cross section standard sidewalk with boulevard width and bike lane requirements for each different type of street typology. Right now, we kind of just have a right of way with. And then there's not much of a standard for what that is back to curb based on the tree or street style. This will have different widths of sidewalks that are required, whether a shared use path is gonna be required alongside of it. The the berms with will vary depending on what the street width is gonna be. So there's a lot more in depth look in terms of what our streets will end up looking like with new belt. And then the last thing I have kind of in the major changes, the visuals and interactivity with this. I don't know if a lot of you guys played with this online or not. Hyperlinks throughout it, interactive table of contents that can take you exactly where you want to go. There's visuals included for ease of interpretation and review, which for the height within area measurements, street placements, zoning district standards, complete street standards, etc. They're all visualized in this to make it a lot simpler. And then for those that are just interested in, you know, what I want to know in in the compact residential for uses that are allowed or the residential lot dimension standards, there's a whole summary table in the beginning. So you don't even have to get into the meats and bones of if you don't want to. If you're just looking for information. So this has done a really good job of summarizing the information to where it's easy to review, depending on what you want to look at. And it it's also relatively smooth to navigate throughout if you're looking to get specific information. So there are a couple of questions that I guess I want to start the the conversation with, and and the first is gonna be signage. There are a million and a half ways I could tell you that doing is a great idea. Or whether it's a bad idea, sign pollution's a big thing, lots of articles in terms of why you shouldn't make your streets look like Vegas, but if that's what Horus wants, then we can write this signage ordinance any way we want to do it. Or if we want to look like a small ski town in Aspen with super minimal signage, that's what we can do too. Right now, what the the sign ordinance has is kind of an in between. Does it meet what the Derek Queen was gonna do? No. But it is kind of a an in between of relatively large amount of signage to small amount of signage. So I guess my my question for both of these boards is is what what do you guys envision of the main like commercial dregs? Do we see like a thirty-second avenue or veterans or nice thirty-second avenue in Fargo where it's a lot of billboards, a lot of signage? Or do we see where that signage has been reduced enough? And believe it or not, as much as people complain about signs, a lot of companies have a backup plan. They obviously want to do their initial signage that they want to do, but if our ordinances are set to the way we want that sign to look, I think we have a case, but that's more of a question for I guess everyone and anyone is what what do you envision? And we can tackle it anytime. We can tackle it right now, but there's something to keep kind of thinking about it as we're going through this. Because that would be one of the the last setting big question marks I have in in the ordinance in terms of how do we write and how do we have giftless lips to write that? I don't know if anyone has an initial comments or thoughts on that, but.
Did you want to wait for questions at the end? I've just been jotting down.
Okay.
Yeah, we can. If you want.
Jase.
Questions at the end.
I recommend that we don't tackle this.
Okay.
We've walked on it.
Okay, well, something to keep in mind then as we're we're going through, just as you guys are reading through and thinking kind of what we want to do in signs. I like the way the sign ordinance is written now in this this proposal. But again, it's it's gonna think via a citywide collective of what we think that's gonna look like. So there's something to keep in mind as as we kind of go through.
You want to back up to Jase?
Yeah.
You guys have written down some questions on this stuff. If you want to go back to what you just kind of went through. See if there are any questions.
Yeah.
Yes, because. Kind of like.
Yep.
So you guys have questions on those first?
I do.
Ten to five, so.
Yeah, sir.
Start.
Uh, question on slide nine, questions on revocation. If you could explain more. Question on the process for future land use map changes just once a year, explain more. One is it happened, others it happened. So first let's start with revocation.
Yep.
I thought the, uh, Rodney, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Sean Kessel did a, he had a good point that Dickinson allows for somebody to submit a plot, but if they do not execute whatever they were planning and doing with that plot within a year, I believe it goes back to whatever zoning the city wants at that point. I would I would like to see that, that way that it's a problem of a developer wanting to do something and then sitting on it for two years, which we're currently dealing with right now with one developer. So I'm open to discussion on it, but that's just one thing that I was wondering about your revocation.
So the revocation was was specific to the condition they use permit. Our plat still has the one year that they have to require to record it. But that's about it in terms of enforcement, I guess, for the Platts to continue. They have to record it with a year, otherwise it's expired and they can apply for an extension. The the revocation for a conditional use permit is relatively similar to code enforcement process. They're informed that they are in violation of something. They have thirty days to correct it without penalty. And if it's not corrected, then basically we bring it to hearing whether or not we're gonna revoke back to this thing use permit. Which then would cease all operations like they're doing on that site. But I'm not opposed to what you're saying in terms of of a rezoning or back to whatever we want. My my only hesitancy in that is the point of improving and modifying your current zoning standard is to not really get rid of or change the zoning of a parcel. Otherwise, we're right back to we're gonna rezone things and we're gonna bring things back.
So right now, I will just take two different developers that have one on the north side, one on the south side. Each of them have stretched out and what I've said, push probably this limit of two plus years on the north side and we're going on two plus years on the south side without them actually completing their project and just asking for extensions or changes. At some point, when do you say enough is enough? Because it looks like they're just trying to get something established before anything changes. And then they sit on it.
Right.
If that makes sense.
Why else you mean?
I didn't. So the the one to the south is obviously that the contract enforcement issue. The city has the contract in place. That project's supposed to be done. So it's up to the city to get that project done. Up to the north, I think the city is in conversation with that developer to get the improvements installed. The plan stuff has been reported. And then like the rezone and stuff too. So it's just been a back and forth with the city and the developers engineering to come up with improvement that back to the satisfaction of the city. If it's the same development.
Mm-hmm.
United.
Yeah.
So nothing to do with the plat, nothing to do with three zone, uh, three or one of them. It has to be. Even such as he has. And, you know, maybe something that we could do with that is put something in the ID agreement, the improvement district agreement that we have with these developers saying that they need to do them in a a new manner, but the contract, the construction contract does.
I think where you're concerned, what I'm hearing is that if they plaid it, they need to get the improvements done or started within a year. You're not just plating it and then the vacant land sits there for three years with the platted parcels. It's there's actual infrastructure going in and it's going to happen.
Correct.
And there's, yeah, there's two example, the ones you mentioned, those are the two examples I could think of to that happened in worse. The other areas, for the most part, improvements are happening within a short period of time. You know, I say short period, it could be right away or within a couple of months after the plot has been recorded. They're asking for to move forward with game infrastructure put in.
That's the north one doesn't have a construction contract yet. That one has drug on since.
That's been a while.
One, I think what's going into though is is the market might dictate when these projects are going through and I'm guessing or speculating that the developers may be concerned that if the infrastructure goes in that they can't sell lots and that they're then sitting on these specials. They are the ones that are responsible for paying the specials until that lot is sold.
Well, that went to the north, they flip back and forth where they gave on.
I know, but I'm just, I'm speculating as to why.
One, one example of what you're getting at, and I think Russ is probably the only one who knows besides me, is the pace of stuff for the schools where they came in and platted that. It was up by where the high school and the middle school are. That was plaid a New Horizon Homes plaided that long time ago, wasn't it, Russ? Probably like before fifteen? And it was like four hundred and some lots, just boom, 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 boom. And then all of a sudden now city said, well, or somebody said that the city doesn't have sewer capacity, so it just sat. And the land swap happened. Schools came down there, SSL.
And I'm.
I mean, a little money, stuff like that, but that was a big subject.
From a developer saying they're gonna do something and then not actually following through. Now, yes, I hear the the financial component of it. Up until this year, I would say that probably shouldn't have been the cause. I don't want to get into their financials, but that one should have been executed a long time ago.
Good. Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
I agree with you. I understand where you're coming from. I really recommend that you guys work on and work on the thought. It hasn't changed. Really need to get this this thing completed. Then you can start taking the shots at some of those things for for changing them, adding them.
Does this need to be completed first and have this change in something like this before this is done?
No.
Okay.
You can always change it. You can always add it. The the problem we're running into. We lost a lot of time on this, on this project. At the beginning.
Do you mean the origin story, right?
Yes, we lost.
Okay.
We lost a lot of time at the beginning. Did everything we wanted. And then when we finally got brought in. Anyway. We need to get this thing in place so you can start working with it. And.
This is our initial protection right now.
Okay. Right. Because the longer we beat on this, the longer we're sitting on that old line. Is know how much you love that old line.
Let's do this, though.
I I think, you know, a suggestion I'd have is what you're saying there, Corey and Russ, but, uh, we can pay attention to the issue to see, is it a recurring, is it an ongoing issue or not? I I think it's a concern.
That's what I mean. It's a concern.
Is it an ongoing issue and does it have impacts on what are the impacts it's having on us? I think that would be the question I'd have for, you know, Jase and others is.
Biggest thing I'd be concerned with is if you find things that are influence that you believe need to be changed prior to adoption. But if there's changes that you'd like to add afterwards. It's actually simple process. This is all dual.
Yep, well, somebody else ahead and ask a question.
Okay.
Well, I I guess in in the light of that, I mean, do do you want my specific questions tonight or maybe you don't want my specific? I mean, when you say getting into the weeds.
Specific questions already, I'm gonna have a solution to reason.
Okay.
Maybe not, but at least.
It's our game. We're gonna have a solution. Let's get the questions out.
I don't want to spend like
right, I don't want to spend twenty minutes on each topic, you know, because then we'll be here till we hours in there.
See, I do have some specific, some specific questions.
You know, if we can answer them quickly, great. If not, let's just try to get through kind of what your concerns are, questions, and then we can work to to answer whatever we can.
And as far as I got really was just definition and zoning sections so far, and I love the interactiveness of it. I think that's great. I think you did a really good job with that. I just have a couple of questions. So when I looked at the language in the old ordinance for conditional use, definition changed a little bit. It said, request for zoning changes will not be granted if a conditional use permit must be granted with the zoning change. That language was removed from the current definition, and I was just wondering what the significance. From the current definition, and I was just wondering what the significance of that. Or or how does that change? initially use.
It it doesn't really. I mean, typically. Your conditional use permit is supposed to be one of your most protected processes that I go through because it's conditionally allowed, right? So you have the ability to put conditions on it, you have the ability to structure that any way you want. Someone rezoning a property shouldn't really impact whether or not a conditional use can be done. Which also further emphasizes why the zoning of this is gonna be so important, so hopefully there is not a need to rezone things. In the future. Uh but typically what they did is they took what a conditional use permit is meant on its head. And actually applied that standard versus adding a bunch of additional conditions to a condition to use permit already. That makes sense. There's there's there should be no correlation between your rezone and your condition to use permit. It's just whether or not your use is gonna be permitted or condition to use permitted, which then opens up a whole side of. Of conditions if if they go through that process.
We have actually had to. A couple of times in the last year. We have had to pass the conditional use permit. Prior to the result. Because if they don't have the commercial use permit, they don't want the result because they're not gonna be able to do their project. You betcha. But when I first looked at it, I said, tell them. You want that? Part of part of why some of that wording had to change. The other one is a uh. curb station. In any case. That wording was actually in there because. Trying to zone your request to change. The council has asked things. And we were trying to take, trying to take the political issues of. This orbits. Actually. The points of this, you guys shouldn't have to make make a decision on the size of the sign. You guys shouldn't have to make a decision on. Based on the politics of. There's wording in uh in the additional use permit that we put in because. Not my business to say, it's just that I've been a more. Anyway. I've seen everything. All of that's what we tried to address and. And fix the ordinance.
Question number two.
Yeah, I guess I'll. Yeah, no, that that helps. And then the planned unit development definition changed as well. Language from the old ordinance of five acres or more was removed. I just wondered what the significance of that was. And then in our comprehensive plan, the recommendation was. To eliminate reference to five acres, but to keep that number in the ordinance standards themselves. And I was just wondering what what that means and what is the significance of that.
That one I don't have an answer to.
So that that one was just based on again. Past experience of the city where someone wanted a PUD that I don't remember what the number used to be for the city, but I think. Five acres, city had a situation where. This corner over here, the lot was smaller. It felt like a beauty made sense there, the way to change the ordinance. Allow them to do a few.
So they keep the number in the ordinance standards themselves, does that mean it's a reference to the size of the?
Yeah, and this still. So there is still side a size requirement that's kept, it's just saying it dropped from five to two.
It used to be five, it was dropped on to two. Because we're running, I remember when we had to deal with PUDs in the past. We had a couple, we had one in particular that they were just trying to add another parcel to it. Just to get to that five acre minimum. And it wasn't really helpful to the actual PUD concept that they're pushing. It was just cause to check the box and. We were across that going, okay, this is kind of crazy. And it defeat, it was really hindering the whole purpose of what the PUD was at the time or why they're pursuing it in the first place. Um and I think Terragarden second was the, is the only PUD so far. That's actually. Oh, Lakeview Heights, so there's two. Um but Terragarden second, I believe was under the five, isn't it?
I believe so.
Because we bounce it down, bumped it down to two. Or it's right at five. I'm trying to remember if it was five.
Who sticks on my mind really?
Who is in my head too? But.
Biograms and you can change that and the the sizes pretty easy with that drawing. In the paragraphs where we may not find it in there, we don't want anything buried in the paragraphs. Mentioning size and dimensions and setbacks and stuff, we want that on those pages where it's very visible, where it's easy to change. And where we won't miss it somewhere and then all of a sudden, oh, a developer comes and. Touches us with our PM stone, basically, you know, so that I think that was the reason.
Yeah, the next thing I'll add to that is it. It's now taking definitions as true definitions where in our current ordinance, a lot of those definitions are standards.
Yep.
And so that's moved the standards to where they're actually supposed to be, which is in the bulk of. Of the book.
And then I just, I just have. I mean, I probably don't intend to go through all my questions, but I just have. Just some basic questions on the zoning. I mean, we've, we we don't have residential estate. Basically, um.
You don't have any of the the current districts that we have now.
Correct, so but but essentially it looks like. I guess, I mean, to cut to the chase a little bit, in our future or our future proposed map of what we're good, what we're going to prove to going forward. Do we have sections for SR one, two and three? That are undeveloped.
You have standards right now, like if you're saying. In the Futurian East map is a reference to SR one and three right now, one, two, three, or?
In per areas that are undeveloped.
Yeah, you have your your suburban designation, so our our comp plan is is set from two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. You have your designations of of suburban, there's a rural residential one in there. Um compact urban, this follows most of of those, so we have right now the SR zone, right, for example. Well, that SR zone actually isn't considered a compatible district with any designation that the city has. So what the the new ordinance does with the SR one, two and three is takes those suburban oriented districts. And basically consolidates them into three districts that then are more compatible with what the Futurian East map has. So that actually would allow for those larger lots to thrive. Out in the outskirts of the city where typically you see the larger lots happen. Uh versus our current setup actually is pretty prohibitive for allowing larger lots to happen in some of those outside areas.
Because basically, so SR one, we're basically reducing our largest potential lot. Minimum from three to one. And we're reducing the lot width from two hundred fifty to one twenty, we're dropping it down, that's SR one. And then SR two, we have an eighty foot minimum lot, twenty feet between homes. SR three quarter lot. Twenty three feet apart, but it looks like the vast majority of the map. Is our new CR.
Compact residential.
And UR. And compact residential to me is just the new name for.
RC.
Six density. Um and I recognize that you, and we talked a little bit about that, the lot with averaging a forty six percent. And I I see that, but the reality of it is. This is just basically taking all of our, in my opinion, taking all of our districts and and putting it into basically. R six. Um minimum lot size of four thousand square feet. And we're increasing the maximum building coverage on the lot from fifty to sixty five percent. Um and I realize you have the forty six average. On there, but. I mean. I'm not a math person, but essentially that means to me, half of the lots are gonna be less than forty six percent and half will be greater. And I think you could meet that essentially. Um by a bunch of forty, basically forty foot lots and then. And then the rest fifty foot lots and maybe throw a few fifty five and fifty five feet quarter cap lots and you make your requirements. And so I guess my main concern overall, when I look at them is just um. I think we need to increase the minimum lot size in that zone. The vast majority of the undeveloped land that I see in city limits is CR or UR.
Which is based off the Futurian East map that was approved.
But that's my point, so I don't even really see any SR one, two and three. Planned it too much in the city. Um we we have more. We're we're requiring. Larger, we're requiring larger lots in our mobile home zone than we are in our compact residential, which is basically, I looks to me gonna be like. Pretty much. The zone for the city. So I have a problem with the lot. Bit size.
One thing to to keep in mind, so the reason you don't see a bunch of SR one, two and three plaster all over is because the bulk of the outer limits of the city are zone ag. They're designated suburban, which means at the time that they were to redevelop, those would be the the obvious choices that they would go to. But this isn't rezoning a bunch of our ag property because. Currently, I don't think we're ready to develop a bunch of our ag property, nor should we.
Yeah.
Um so the the response in terms of is the compact residential eating in most of the city? Well, yes, that's what you're seeing in in most of the developed land right now, that's what most of it's designated and a lot of it's already zoned that way. Um minimum lot width is just that, it's a minimum. You have your averages, we still have conversations that take place on what that final product's gonna look like. You know, I I'm never gonna recommend to you to be stricter on on housing. At all, because housing homeownership is hard enough. Um cost of housing is insane right now, so. You know, I I'm a proponent for the ability for people to choose the type of house they want. Not everyone's gonna be stuck on a seventy, eighty, ninety foot lot. Because A, that's not what everyone wants to be, that's not what ninety percent of people can afford anymore. And so there has to be a point where we're a little more open to. The things that are meant to buffer to commercial to make those walkable spaces, so you have those uses adjacent. And then as we transition out to the outer skirts of the town, that's where the larger cities gonna, our larger lots are gonna thrive. Large lots are heavy on infrastructure, it costs a lot of money to do. And typically, you're not gonna find a lot of the larger lots inside the city where that infrastructure is meant for infill. Which is typically done with the more compact stuff, so. We can change it, but I'm just telling you that's not ever gonna be a recommendation for me to adjust those minimum lot sizes. Because again, they're exactly that, they're minimums.
It's on the on the map, when we, maybe I'm getting the the terminology wrong. Like, will we do a future zoning map in the undeveloped, unplanted area that's egg?
We already have a future zoning map.
Was for them, those areas to be.
We already have a future zoning map in place. We have a Futurian East map that was approved with the comp plan. That is right now the currently proposed zoning map for the city. So you have your Futurian East map, which we refer to as designations, that's not the actual district itself. That establishes the actual district itself. The properties that aren't reflected on there that may be egg, and then the time they decide to sell or sell. They're going to then be subject to whatever the Futurian East map calls for them. And most of that outskirts is that suburban, which is gonna fall in that SR one, two and three.
Maybe I don't have that.
But I think on the Future Land Use Map, it's typically your placeholder.
I don't see.
In our, in our ordinance, in our current Futurian East map, egg is not really prevalent on the Futurian East map.
Because at the time of the comprehensive plan and Russ could, please help me if I'm missing anything on this. But when the Futurian East map was developed in our current comprehensive plan, it was acknowledged that the comp plan was a twenty five year plan. They acknowledge by having some areas that are ag right now, realistically are ag and probably will be for the next five, ten years or whatever. The planning commission, councils, the staff, everybody was viewing as, okay. Realistically, in twenty five years, it's probably gonna develop to some degree. And they wanted to have that reflected, acknowledging that development is likely to occur here, it's likely not just gonna be a field. In twenty five years.
Was the best shot. Yeah. What we think. And is map. And the zoning map. Should not be confused. Because the Future Land Use Map. Future Land Use Map. Generally.
Gives you an idea.
It gives you an idea, and what you may find is on the Future Land Use Map. Places that are on that Future Land Use Map that are actually zoned differently. Than the Future Land Use Map actually called for them. That's a decision that actually happens. At the city council.
Yes, and that current zoning map. Has gone. Every single area that was rezoned went through the city council and. That's why it's zoned the way it is, is because it went through all the channels, went through all the process. And went through the city council, whether you, I don't know if that was when you during your term or the term before you run. But we can't change that, that that was brought before this, all the boards was requested. Was rezoned and approved and that is what it is unless they come and ask rezonate.
Give you an idea of how it works. I got a call from the mayor one Wednesday morning, he said, what did you guys do last night? Because. For those two schools are now the middle and high school. They had come before us. And I did, we did the only thing we can do to stop something. We tabled it.
Yep.
We tabled it, so it couldn't go to city council, it couldn't go anyplace until we went up. Because the schools didn't match our future land use map. So I came to city council, explained to the mayor what I said, next city council meeting, I will have a request from you. Yes, we make our recommendations to. City council. I'm going to ask city council to vote to override the Future Land Use Map. And then on our next meeting. We will abide by your wishes. That's exactly what happened. City council voted to override the Future Land Use Map, so we can put the schools there. Because. We didn't allow anything to go forward because it didn't match the Future Land Use Map, because.
You guys are doing your job.
We're 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 doing our job, but the other thing is. The Future Land Use Map is something that you have to spend a lot of time on. And it needs to start. You know. It needs to start again. In other words, we've got a Future Land Use Map for twenty four five.
Yeah.
Twenty forty.
Okay, well, guess what? Things have changed.
Yeah.
So dramatically, but.
And that Future Land Use Map, that also went through all the proper channels and everything, there was a. It went through us, it went through the city council. It was a public hearing, there were like two or three public hearings on it. It went through the whole process to get where it was, where it is. Not to say that it can't be changed, like you're saying, that Future Land Use Map should be visited on a regular basis to make sure that. It still fits with the needs and the wants and the way the city is.
But that's also the process you need to you need to go through. The Future Land Use Map will take you a year to change.
And I'm not, I'm not questioning what has happened with the with the maps.
There'll still be areas.
Questioning what the zonings are.
Okay.
So for trying to explain, yeah. Lean how it works, how it works and what happened and why you're seeing what you're seeing. When you're seeing that's there, that that wasn't like. That that doesn't even match this, to be honest, it matches the old, right? It matches our old ordinance, because it can't match this, because we haven't touched this yet. Yeah, but what's on there are are all. Belters that came through, bought the land, went through the whole process and were approved. So, yeah, you probably see a lot of the compact residential, because there were a lot that came through and requested that and it went through the whole process.
And with our old plan, we were updating the ordinance almost every other month to try and cut, keep up with what.
Twice a month, because back when we could all together, we were going, we went through six different iterations.
We. We actually updated.
That we were up to date.
The Future Land Use Map was actually updated at the very very beginning of the comprehensive plan process. In order to help guide any development activity that was happening during the time of the comprehensive plan. Because we really didn't have a strong. Because we really didn't have a strong future land use map at all. Is it reflective of everything that is happening with development activity right now? Probably not. Because at the time it was developed, we weren't being told from the different developers, hey, this is what we're thinking. They also didn't have it all mapped out what they were thinking. They have a better idea of what they wanna do. At the time, there was quite a bit of land still in transition where it was not owned by developers. Yeah.
Proceed and, and had a really good cross section from the city of where that was on the map and where it was going. And I felt you guys did a really good job. It did. It took a lot of time. Thank you for that because I know I asked.
So definitely, I mean, quick, the, the zoning map that's in that is gonna be different than the future land use map. That's gonna be the districts that are established that are pretty much entitled and active to go now. That future land use map is a, a twenty year story. Of what development may be like. Now, twenty year plan is a comp plan. Typically, they're revisited every five years. So we're probably getting close to a point of having to revisit it again. But I don't know, does that answer your question?
It, it does. I guess, I guess, I mean, I just would, would ask fellow council or others. I mean, does anyone else have a, have a concern with that? I mean, the compact residential, we have only interior side setbacks of five feet. So we're gonna have homes again that are ten feet apart and that's the minimum and the minimum lot size. With, with, I mean, just for like an example or visual with, with that, which is mostly. What I, it's all boiled down to is contact residential. That's, that's eleven homes per acre. It's like eleven homes in my yard. We have, we are mandating bigger lot size for our mobile home zoning ordinance or zone. With sixty foot minimum frontage in the mobile homes instead of this. And it gets, and then, and then the urban residential is even smaller. Obviously, then, uh. Then the, then the compact twelve hundred square feet front. Four thousand square feet lot size. Increasing density from fifty to seventy-five percent. I just, I have concerns about. About that.
Are we gonna get input from, uh, fire chief on this? As far as like density? Uh, or have we?
He has.
So, oh, the, well, previous one has.
The previous one, and they do not have a chief that really reviews this. No, it's, they have a chief for like operations. So to put out fire, uh, but they do not have.
In the, uh. In the review committee meetings that we had. He was one present.
Yes, they, they were involved. Yeah.
I mean, look at that higher that house. And that house started on fire and it started the house next to it on fire. I mean, there is a level of safety too. And, and, and honestly, I mean, I told Jason my conversation with him. I, and, and Jayce did say that this new ordinance definitely will. With my feelings of feeling like just such a boxy. Oh, I feel like we're boxy and it's, it, it doesn't feel beautiful. It feels like we have these homes right on top of each other, right in a row. Nothing looks appealing. And I want the city to be, I don't want it to look like some regular, you know. And I don't, I don't know. Jayce made a point to say that this ordinance should help with that because of the different levels. That we're putting in here with the tree and whatever. But I do have a little bit of concern with just the feel. That's my concern. And so when we start talking about the sizes and. Now, frontage and just all of these things and things. I just want it to be. Not feel so.
Kind of show that's the.
I think it's in there.
Yeah.
Also, I mean, even when you drive down the street. Like it's literally a driveway, a driveway, a driveway, a driveway. There's nothing, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Just, it doesn't look pretty.
It's part of the tree ordinance that we needed.
Re-ordinance and, and, you know, I know there's concern of the smaller lots that is not being able to fit trees. One thing this does do is it varies the distance of trees based on the district that it's in. So, which would allow for street trees to thrive where we typically wouldn't see them based on our current ordinance written.
So what about the road then? Like if we're having these smaller. How just, like, what is the roads gonna look like? Because I wanna make sure that we're not having issues like we've been seeing. With, you know, parking and. Snow removal. I mean, how many times do we have? Those are my concerns too, that, so.
And the road widths, uh, would be typically addressed than design standards.
Design that, I mean, local section in this is seventy feet right away, which is standard what we have now. Twenty-four and a half street section or street.
No, it's thirty-nine, thirty back to back.
Yeah, thirty back to back.
Which is a foot wider.
A foot wider than what?
What we have is now.
What do we have right now?
Twenty-nine feet face to face. This is thirty. I wanna say it's back to back.
Back to back.
I think it's thirty back to back.
And that's six inches of curve, right?
It's six inches of curve, yeah. So.
For all of the zones.
Or is it thirty face to face? That's the smallest one. That's the local street.
It'd have to be thirty face to face.
Right, yeah, that's why.
I'm just thinking of.
Yeah, this has been so dang long since I looked at it.
I was just thinking of the issues we discussed in Cup Creek with the parking and the snow removal. Um, how big, how wide of a room is that?
That's the twenty-nine.
That's twenty-nine and we're going with.
Just a tad bit wider.
I mean, will we, do you foresee, when we have the discussion about, I think we discussed we couldn't go parking. In the winter, right? On those roads? And, and so are we really addressing that though? If we're going to stay hair bigger than that, I don't know that we are. And I feel, and I feel bad for those residents if we have to implement no parking on either side of the street in the winter. I'd like to see it a little bit wider so we can at least accommodate some of that. It's not.
The one thing to remember is in the driveway width, in what is now R six, which is kind of the same difference. Is twenty-four feet maximum. Doesn't give anyone to park on that road. You hear me blocking driveways.
That's, that's what I'm seeing.
You would have to mandate that somebody has their, if you were on a east west road, you'd have to have a driveway on the east side a lot, the west side a lot. So that they're close together to have one place to park. Otherwise, you're blocking, you're blocking driveway.
What if we just made the lots bigger though?
Well, I, that's, that's the discussion you're having and I'm just telling you that if you want parking on there, you can't do it with. Forty foot lots and a twenty-four.
Not only that, if you have a sidewalk at all, where are you putting the snow? I do actually, I mean that.
I mean, there is room for that. It just, it's really, really narrow in the summer, in the wintertime. I mean, we, guys, so we club creep, it's awfully, awfully narrow. Back in the old days, forty-two feet back to back was the standard state street. Two twelve foot driveways, two eight foot parking lanes. That is significantly strung, strung and that has to do with cost. And there were times during Common Creek where developers wanted the road to be less width. Yeah. And that's what it goes back to, it's the special, yeah, so back to the cost. And using, I don't believe in using the gutter pan as part of the driving, driving surface. And that's, it has been done in the past.
And I'm not trying to get the lead, it's just one more discussion point that I believe what she is trying to make. That you, you have the problem of greenfields last year, two houses on fire because they're literally like six feet apart. Where they can hand something out the window to their neighbor. I don't, definitely don't wanna get that here. I, I don't know if that's in our setbacks or not.
Well, it's five foot each. Ten feet minimum between houses.
Cause you're talking over by Shanley last year in Fargo?
Yes.
Yeah, that's three feet.
Six, yeah, those are six.
Have five foot in front, so that's too. I guess, I guess some of my concerns, we can talk about them later, is the counter residential. Small yards, homes ten feet apart, which we've seen is difficult. I mean, I think it's difficult. There's, uh, you know, we took our highest density of R six and we've actually reduced it and increased. Uh, the percentage that we will allow building on, on the lot, like from fifty to sixty-five or seventy-five. Um, and there are some areas that we only have five foot front setbacks.
There'll be your mixed use.
A lot of their mixed use and a lot of that is, is based on an aesthetic of, of creating that walkable by where you're not gonna have driveways in the front. It's more of a front facing product. It's, a lot of this is set up to invite different types of, of housing products, you know, or the main concern is. A single family home, a standard single family home. Again, that reality is cleaning as far as what people are buying with the markets dictating. People are, are buying different products. People wanna live in these walkable places that, you know, is, it is a front porch haven. Because it's not a vehicle parked in front. It's vehicles parked in back. Um, you know, alley, alley loaded products, those are becoming a big thing again. It's. It, overall, and I, I get your answer. I'm not saying anything you're saying is, is not valid. But there, there is a, a sense of flexibility built into this to accommodate more than just a single family home.
Give you an idea, the, uh. That there's, uh, a section in there where they have a very. Short, we actually have a maximum front setback set. Part of it was, uh, at one point we were talking with the developer. Place that isn't developed yet that he's talking about putting in the equivalent of brownstones. Which is a very, uh, attractive neighborhood.
Yeah.
Those have minimal setback. Intentionally. Parking back. You, you, you do everything in back. You have, uh, and it, it, it's a walkable.
So then, what you're saying is when that comes to us or you, I guess, then you're requesting that.
Well, when we first, when we first had, had the discussion with the developer, we told them, that really looks good. We can't do it under, under the current ordinance. It can't be done.
Okay.
It gives you options.
So when we have those, um, setbacks then, what you're saying is that you would tell them that they should. The driveway and the parking in the back? Is that what you're saying? Yeah.
There is no other option. That, that's, and that was, that was part of the, uh. You know, do you know what I'm talking about when I talk about brownstone? Okay. You'll have to, you'll have to come up with pictures at some point.
Yeah.
I'll send you pictures.
Yeah.
Help first.
Yes.
Ever, just send them to everybody here so everybody's on the same page.
Yep.
They probably won't be built brown, with brownstone. It's, it's a typical type of construction that, uh.
Developer actually took us over to look at it. I was.
Remember.
He took us over to go look at what he was talking about.
I don't remember, but.
I, I know what we're talking, I know what we're talking about because of topic concept.
Almost no setbacks. Basically what you got in front of the house, in front of the, the housing or. Is.
It's, it's.
Jason's gonna have to show you the kind of things that we've been talking about. The problem is, we have. Two years of looking at this that we can't.
Maybe that's what it, it's gonna take, like some visuals for me because.
Yes.
All I'm seeing in my head is like.
Right.
Fucking little tiny ass driveways with like.
Well, I get what you're saying. When you look at those, it, it is hard to imagine. I understand get it. And so it probably would be good to find examples of similar style things. So you can get an idea of what that potentially is because there are frankly, a lot more developments that are more compact. That are ten times more beautiful than even like Lost River or something like that. I mean, just the way that they're designed, the materials they use.
But the, the other thing that we need to keep in mind here as well is that we need to have affordable housing in town here too.
One gonna be twenty this summer and the other one's gonna be twenty-three. If I want my kids to come back here and live in the cities, there's no way they can buy a single family's home that's built in the city right now. There's no way. I, I'm not gonna put the down payment for them.
I know, but I've been told those are the starter homes though.
Well, I mean, so, so please, that's why we have this compact residential. These kids are tired of living in an apartment. They live in an apartment. They've done it through their whole college life. You gotta do it. I get it. You gotta do what you gotta do, right? For the income that you have. They are fine in the apartment now, but they would like to have a home, something that's there is that they can build equity on. And then as they grow in their. And more money and save up equity in that home instead of just, you know, basically like bringing a check, writing rent every month. That you did get none of that back, then they can purchase and move to a larger home. And I think Horace should make sure that we are an inclusive, diverse of community.
I definitely think we are. I mean, the majority.
When you start saying that you can't have. Unpacked residential lots, you're not.
It's not, it's not what I said in.
We actually have a lot of unpacked residential lots right now. The majority of our lots are small lots. And we have duplexes in town homes.
We have, we have more starter homes is what they've been called to me by the people that work here. We have more starter homes in this community than anywhere else around here. They are considered starter.
They're not.
And though they're.
Not more than West Fargo or Fargo.
Well, that's. Yes, these are all starter homes.
But, but to, to your point. I realize we don't have a lot of. Used homes or previous lived in homes for people to buy and fix up and build equity in. That is the problem with everywhere right now. It's not just Horace. It is, you know, like the entire metro. All we are saying is that. We get the financial point of it, but at what point does it also start costing us more money? The snow removal, the problems with these smaller developments. I, I ask you to take a ride with one of our public work sizes. Experience what they do, trying to get through some of these smaller roads. It's gonna have some pain in the ass, but if we keep adding more and more. Where do you put the snow? And I think this year is, I don't wanna say a perfect year as an example. We, we had a significant amount of snow towards the end here. But let's say we were like Bismarck, okay? Where they got a record amount of snow. Where are you putting the snow? How are you removing it from the road so that the school buses can drive down the road? That's a actual problem.
Yep.
And how do we address that? Do, do you just keep cramming more homes into an area to try to make it affordable to fix a housing problem? It's, it's not just Horace that has to fix the housing problem. It's something bigger in general.
But then if you build these bigger lots, and so say you take a development and you put less housing on, specials are gonna be more expensive.
I think every single person here is probably going to the exact same thing right now. Every year, their assessed values are going up and it's like, oh crap, you know?
Is there anyone here? I think we all move on.
To your point, you mean what you're saying because I mean, honestly, if I was to have to start over, I couldn't afford a house without you either. I couldn't. And, and I, I'm just being honest with you, like I'm the youngest down here.
That's what's coming for us a lot is the compact housing that's come in so far. So that's what you're seeing going in right now. That's a, that's a sell right now. Seeing anything else around any other perimeters, you aren't seeing any of those other developments that have been coming in. That have variable sizes and lots that haven't started yet. You're just seeing that ballpark over there. That, uh, so, so let me, let me ask you the question.
So for right, right, right now, with the economy the way it is, okay? To me, that or those areas of town are gonna get the hardest. Because that's not where a lot of people can currently go out and get a mortgage to afford one of those homes. They're trying to get into one of those, but the interest rates have pushed them out, okay? The people that are still building the, the mid and high level or high-end homes, they're still gonna do it, right? So, so you, I would assume, you know, if, if Jack is still moving forward with stuff in Lost River or Lost River West or whatever. That he's still having clientele come to him, as we're, we're probably losing clientele in some of the other denser areas of town.
Jack builds R six.
I get it.
I think Lost River is R six, except for the section of a couple streets. Lost River is all R six.
And, and to that point though, they're not starter level homes. Is that, is that a fair assumption?
They're not forty-foot lots.
There, there are four, there are a variety of houses.
I shouldn't say R six, then you've called me on that before, right?
Yeah.
I, I'm talking more about the minimum size lot. I'm talking about the forty-foot lots. I shouldn't, I shouldn't say R six as a whitewash. I apologize.
I don't wanna get too far off topic. I just, I understand your point and I, and I realize the Horace can't solve it itself. Okay, there, there's a lot of other cities here in the metro. What do you do though, for, for capital, for our size? We have a large section of denser residential compared to the old Fargo, the older West Fargo and stuff like that.
I, I think one, one thing I wanna stress, at least from the staff side here. And I know planning commission has put a lot of thought towards this too, is. I know they've heard concerns about the forty-foot wide lots. Staff has heard those concerns. And having that lot average of say forty-six feet foot wide average lot size. Has been a mechanism to encourage lot variability within the development. So you don't have forty-foot cookie cutter lots. And you get a little bit of the variety. We've tried to stress that with the developers and we've been successful in some and others not as much. But we've been able to encourage that through working with those developers going, hey, try to mix it up a little bit, get some variety. And the ones that have done it, I think have been very successful in being able to move some of those lots. But if you're just gonna bump the lot size up to say fifty feet, then they're, they're gonna come back at you with a, well, we're gonna do bare minimum, fifty foot. Bare minimum, D gets a degree mentality. And with this, it was not saying that, no, you can't do a forty footer. It's that you have a forty-foot lot, you know, you have some here, you have some there. Then you have some forty-fives, some fifties, some variability. So you get a different type of house because a house that fits on a fifty-foot wide lot versus a house that fits on a forty-foot. They're different inventory. So you're encouraging that anti-monotony. By having some of those variability and lot sizes naturally, because you're gonna be able to put a different product on it. We're seeing that even in Maple Lakes where some of the developers been proposing boundary line adjustments at times. Why? Because they wanna be able to put a different house on there. They need to get maybe ten feet here or five feet there. So they're doing a boundary line adjustment to adjust the lot width. Plus or minus, so they could get a different house. So it's not the exact same house everywhere. And that's what they're trying to do with the average lot width. Not being so perspect, so, oh, it has to be forty or fifty feet. We're not trying to be hung up on that. We're just trying to encourage the variety because you're going to be able to have more success. With a variety of lot sizes because the inventory is gonna be different. That's why.
Five foot offsets, I'm not. That I disagree. That's in, at the time it was. Decide, okay. And so that being said, and, and the older reason I struggle with that and I argued for it at that time, I didn't win this. Have downsides.
I thought the same.
I thought average downsides. I call it off. And be mowing at the same time. So that's my biggest heartbreak. I have less heartbreak. And adjust, and I agree with the. That, that backs personally are my biggest. Because I don't like things close and, and I agree. Especially with fire, trying to get a ladder. If we have a truck, we don't have a truck right now. The world doesn't have a truck with a ladder. Fargo does, West Fargo does, and trying to get a ladder swarmed around. Is an absolute. And so that's my biggest concern.
I think I agree.
I think you did.
I.
But we lost.
Yeah. I think that that would help.
That helps a lot because it bases things out a little further.
I mean, they kinda went through that.
They did. He had his own concerns too, but they were going through transition at the time. You know, in a, in a roundabout way, my probably biggest concern is probably that too, actually, when it's described like that. It's just too close, too close together.
That's it. Uh, I, I don't think anybody has really an aim with bigger or smaller houses. I agree with having a, a community that has a, a variety of things. For the younger kids to move into a mid-range home, to move into a, a, a higher range home and then eventually their forever home, right? I, I'd love to see that, but as Horace, we're one main street and we're building from the inside out right now. So really what we're seeing is a lot of the smaller stuff.
It's calming, but we're not. And unfortunately, it's armor.
On the order of setback, side of setback, sorry. Because that's how.
When I look to move to West Fargo, I wouldn't take. Cause I didn't wanna be able to reach out.
Obviously, you know, I feel the same way, but.
But that, that's not to say that there's not a time and a place for it. And if you're downtown and you're doing your brownstones and you're doing that type of thing, hey, why not? That's your walkability. That's a really desirable feature because people like to be able to walk up. They like that.
Well, it gives you the downtown feeling.
Right.
And you still have that here. Need a downtown. We need that feeling. And that's what part of this is all about, is to get those different diverse areas. And, and there's a lot of people, I mean, I think you said more people are going for smaller. I know my son, a lot of the kids that age or a little bit older than him, they don't want to move on one acre lot. They don't even want a quarter acre lot. They do not want to mow and they do not want to snowball.
Right.
So there's a large market. That's not my choice. I live on an acre lot. That's, but that's what's great. We're all diverse and we all have our one different things that we want. And it seems that that is what is popular right now. They want no maintenance, meaning I don't wanna have to shovel. I don't wanna mow. I don't wanna do anything.
I want condos here as soon as my kid graduates.
So there's a market. And, and it depends on the people, if, if they wanna, you know, if you want that country feel or the city feel. Or you wanna get that transition from, I'm in an apartment, I have people above me and below me and on each side of me. If I get in a house and I have ten feet to that next house, I'm gonna feel like I'm in freedom, man. I don't have somebody with their wall and my wall and someone's banging on it. I mean, you know what I mean?
I do.
There's, there's those transition points in your life. And some people live in apartments all their life and they like that. So it, it's a personal choice is what that is.
I guess I just want it to be pretty. I want it to look good because I feel like we have such. Right now.
It started that way.
Yeah.
With Southdale first. And getting into certain proportions of their, I agree. And that was very first of its kind.
Yeah.
The very first that had hit this council prior to all of our times. And that was kind of a learning experience. And, and they did learn from that and really put into the anti-monotony. Started talking about how we're going to get the garages to look different, the roof lines to look different. We had a lot of discussion on that. So Southdale, Fourth, Fifth, and now Sixth coming is a very different animal than what we saw in.
Cause even the developer is upset with what came up.
Should be.
And that's why they put, they up, they up their covenants, what you're describing. They did in their covenants. And. They're a lot more restrictive. So could they always be more restrictive? Yeah, but they went. Quite a ways on restrictiveness within their covenants.
And will and filled in, so you won't see that. It's gonna be exactly like the Hornbacher sauce, good.
Yeah.
Where they've got the great big commercial building. All houses, that was the worst of its kind in that neighborhood too. And then it's equal for us, you get more for us. The exact same. And we were lucky that the developers listened to us.
Yes.
And did some variation because they didn't have to do any of that. They could have said, you know what, to us and went and done whatever they wanted because they had that right.
But he wasn't.
No, but.
Right.
Well, but there was a compromise, right? Got a good compromise. What we have today, at the end of the year, we moved to this, we have that variability. That's, that's why we're pushing hard to get this because the longer we wait for this, the more developments that can get pushed through on the old one. That, that one, you just have to like basically beg with people to do what we want them to.
Well, and so.
It's today.
Yes.
Versus this.
I agree.
This actually has the empty pot, if they.
Yes.
Been watching. What's your face about that? Cause you've asked a couple of times. I don't know. I haven't read the whole thing.
It's. Moving any kind of final thoughts on that? I heard everyone's kind of concerns. That's fine.
Questions.
Yeah.
Uh, all the stuff that we had talked about previously, maybe in the one-offs and stuff like that, did you wanna cover any of that tonight or is that just?
That's why.
Obviously, I went to the wing to see if there's any updates to the, what was sent out in an email. And I haven't seen any updates or even like strike throughs or anything like that, anything that we previously talked about. Um, or to be brought up for discussion. So for example, I'm just gonna use the scoping of this document. The actual section says scope. Where I said there's some pretty restrictive language in there. Stuff like that. Is that what you wanna have brought up tonight or what, what were you hoping to have brought up?
I have that noted, what I guess I'm hoping to bring up because Jeff, you're the only person that I've really heard from Jones's side. I talked to Nami for a little bit. I wanna just, A, get an idea where you guys are at with this ordinance. Are we in a happy, warm feeling? Are we in, I hate this, let's trash it, start over, which please don't. Or are we in a good spot to where we can take our public comment, get some minor corrections of stuff you and I talked about? I think we can easily work in and, and do some modification stuff and then we're good to start going towards adoptioning. But if there are some things that are so burning that are keeping you up at night, that you're just not gonna be able to live with, that's what I kinda wanna hear right now.
Right, and I really will be. When you start this thing and then we got.
March, March twenty-one.
And then we've been working at this at a pretty good pace to try and get caught back up again, to try and get away from this ordinance, right? Get out the new stuff.
So why don't get updated? Like version of what we've talked about. That's, that's kinda what I'm, I'm asking for. Is that are we gonna say something that has changed since it was written?
Right now it's.
This is like the current version where we've seen edits asked for here, X, Y, and Z.
So most likely that would end up kind of happening after the public comment is done. So I have a list of my comments and stuff that I have Lucas to send me a bunch of corrections. Cause there are just number of spelling errors throughout this and things like that that Lucas has caught. And then. So we, we have a kind of a list and then my goal was to, once I get an idea of what everyone's thinking, compile that into one final list. For Giffords Webster to change and then I'll have a, a draft at that point to which I'd be able to say we changed X, Y, and Z. Based on our conversation.
I think we just need to look at. Talked about. We talked about. We, Jim made a really, really good comment that we went from three-two down to twenty-nine, which to me seems asinine. And we need to learn from what we dealt with this year. Otherwise, we're gonna be spending a lot more money. Versus putting a little more money into roads. Now we don't wanna drive anyone out of development something. It doesn't need to be so overbuilt, but it's ridiculous. But I think there's a happy medium there. Same thing, and some people, I'm an offset person, other people are not, and I won't. Already have this already. But I'm gonna bring them up. The things that I have a little bit. They're not showstoppers. No, and there are things that can be modified and adjusted as. If this is a matter of, let's get some, so these guys have some ammo and I won't have to deal with every Gary Green sign that comes. And I wanna say I very much appreciate all the hard work. I think it's a great product and all the work that you guys have done on this over how many years it's been. Um, I thank all of you. It's, it's thankless work and it's necessary work. And so thank you. I, I hope that you don't think my comments are saying I don't think you guys have worked hard at all. It's just, um, yeah, and, and my main comments were addressed tonight, so. Or I mean, we discussed my concerns tonight.
Yeah.
I just, I will go back to the scope before this hits the public. You, you might wanna look at that scope cause it's pretty restrictive, telling people that they cannot. Maintain any building, structure, land or part thereof. Um, or change, can't change what's currently in there, obviously. That everything has to adhere to this right now. Uh, like I said, the, the.
There's no grandfather clause?
The maintaining or the.
There is, is a grandfather clause. There is the non-conforming use, things that exist now that would, would trump that. But I think we talked about getting rid of the word maintain potentially in that. I know.
Maintain your property if it doesn't follow.
The, the point of that scope is a reflection that things moving forward are now subject to this. It doesn't matter if you built your property like, like across the street.
Yep.
They can't continue to do whatever they're doing under the old ordinance. They have to bring everything up to standards if they're going to expand the property, if they're gonna do this. It all is now subject to this and that is the intent of that scope.
Yeah.
And I believe Lucas would like that language, so we're covered.
Is, uh, the only other thing that I really wanted to make sure I was thorough in this meeting was accessory buildings. I know that there was a lot of concern with accessory buildings. Are you guys confident with the changes that have been made? With accessory buildings that it encompasses the needs of the people in our community? And the reason I ask that is because we have.
Pretty lengthy conversation.
Good. And.
And we pitched the chart right here.
It's a serious chart.
We book at.
Believe that was one of our whole page turners.
Too restrictive.
It was too restrictive.
On a one acre or a lot, a. Yes, it was like, couldn't build something to put your tractor in. It's one of those like.
Can I see that? Just cause I got several. In the process of that.
I think, yeah, we talked about that and we had adjusted it cause it went way down and it was like this and we ended up kind of landing in the middle, right? Yeah, we did. And so I, I don't, I wanted to validate that match. Oh, we put together, that's why I have.
That, that's something we talked about.
We've, we've not changed that. And that was the one thing I was gonna talk about with like the SR, or SR one, where we have the much more larger lots. Is there, right, is there something we wanna do for those to allow for a larger building to put in to the tractor? Um, same with, you know, maybe on those larger lots, they're not gonna do two stories. They're gonna have a ramble or they're gonna have a ranch. That's not gonna be as tall, which then would restrict their maximum height that they could do on some of those larger ones as well. So is there a specific clause or something special?
Cause the wording here is that you're not supposed to taller than your, uh, main structure. main structure. And or less than twenty feet. Um.
We do have a, there's a note on like in the agricultural one where it says height accessory building is fifteen feet. Note number two says structures related to an agricultural user manufacturing agricultural products is exempt from height limit. So, so there's.
Going forward, alright.
Well, that's just in the eight one and we'd have to look at them, but, but that's part of this whole thing is, um. You have to, you have to, you really have to read the footnotes because the footnotes help you understand the, the.
We want.
Details of it.
We, we have quite a bit of conversation and that's where I kind of, we bringing this up is your, your SR one is that larger style lot. It is going to be where that shop set back further away and that's the property realistically is the height can be that big of a deal.
The one acre lots, what are those?
Those, those.
I know there are, but what are, what are they quoting?
S R one would be most likely the common.
That's for structures related to agricultural user manufacturing agricultural products. The maximum page shall be determined by the city council based on accepted standards in the area. So we're giving you some latitude in the language in some of these so that you can.
Manufacturing or aid use.
Aid use.
So what, what I'm worried about here is you have we'll just say everybody that has more than one acre in this end of town, alright? Most of them are not for aid use. I, I think even well, what's his name? Dan still probably has his stuff for aid use and that's about it.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so at some point, aid use isn't really going to matter.
Right.
You, you are going to have people that, I think my, my talking point with Jace was, uh, you have people that have resale value of their lot if, you know, if they choose to resell their lot and somebody has motorhome, you know, that is going to be possibly buying whatever lot, okay? And they want to put a, a shop up to fit their motorhome. They're going to have at least probably a twelve foot door, maybe a fourteen foot door. I have no clue. I don't have a motorhome.
So, um, I would suggest you suggest some wording that you think you'd like it to be changed and send it to Jace and.
And it could be, it could be easily handled just from, you know, maximum sidewall height. I think we discussed that. And then also, you know, take out the closet. It is, you know, can't be higher than the, uh, movable structure, uh, the, the maximum height of the roof can't be higher than the movable structure because I got the lot I, I asked Keith about earlier today, just on North Side of Me. It's been a lot of talk of pretty much every conversation, even in our Wall Avenue one. Um, I talked to that owner today. He does plan on actually building a shop. He's worried about the side setbacks. Cause not he wants to put a shop over there, but he has a rambler that he is going to build. And with current zoning and even this, he wouldn't be able to build the shop that he wants, is all I'm saying. So, um.
We still need to put some type of a, or limit though. I mean, so it doesn't get ridiculous.
Oh, I agree.
I don't mind something, but you don't want like a four story.
I thought. Oh, I agree. Totally agree.
That's I'm just saying the language and whatever. I mean, I get where you're coming from, just we got to do something.
So, so sixteen is like a standard as far as sidewall for, for a bigger structure?
So we make it sixteen. On a, to bridge that where it says plate. Any plate height of accessory structure can't be higher than. And I think that, and I think that, uh, well, it's on page five, three, hopefully that's still.
Yeah, five, three, five-ish.
So, and I think that covers site standards, that covers for all residential.
Right. We'll have to make modifications in each of the, the zoning district thing.
Yeah. That's part of the nice thing about this. We tried to make it so you don't have to change somewhere once. You don't have to go look.
Right.
Every single.
Put it at sixteen foot. Covered.
Right.
And then remove the. As long as the pitch of the ground meets their snow load. All I care about. That was the one thing I ran into.
Don't, don't take us wrong. Sorry if I came across really strange. We, we do want you guys to look at this. We want you to read it. We need more eyes on it. We are not perfect. We won't catch everything and, and you have different opinions than we do. So we want you to look at it. And you need to bring forth what you want to suggest.
Was there any other questions here from the council we haven't gone over?
No, I mean, I think I got a good idea, yeah, kind of where you guys are all at. Doesn't sound like anyone's burned it all down. So thank you for that. Um, and I think we're in a good spot to keep moving forward. I would just ask as we kind of work through this public comment period that's out there now. If there are things you have concerns about as you're rereading, reading for the first time, whatever you're doing, please reach out to me, reach out to Brent, whoever. So we can at least kind of have some conversations because the last thing I, I want to do when we get to adoption portion of this is to be here until midnight with planning and zoning commission and then city council. Likes us to go relatively smooth. So if we can try and tackle concerns, walk through things. Said we may not always agree on things. It can come from a different side. You may be coming from the other side, whether they meet, I don't know, but um, I appreciate again, you guys all taking the time. If there's anything else, major, let me know. Again, please reach out. You got my phone number. You got my email. We're almost done.
I just noticed.
It's like it's a concern.
I grew up in Jamestown where the streets are, must be a hundred feet wide, it seems like.
Right.
Okay. The problem is can't afford to build a big door.
I know, I know.
Hey, you want, you want, you want to go to a, a thirty-six foot wide street? Go for it. I see the largest, uh, bond issue I saw come through here was nineteen million for Cub Creek two.
One development.
One development.
Yeah, for one single development.
Wide roads are the way they are.
Roads are built.
All finish is going to be second anything. Yeah, go make sure.
Were they eight or ten?
They were, we're out in business.
Yeah.
They're twenty-four. Those are big.
No, 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 no.
What do you mean?
Single passes.
Yeah, they did the full width.
They did full width.
Yeah, they did do the full width.
So asphalt pavers, eight and ten, ten feet is kind of common. Eight feet is like a parking lot paper. You can get smaller ones, but they don't do the volume that an eight or a ten foot would do. When you get to concrete pavers, they can go quite wide and they're going to never, integral curve. Right, yeah. They, it, it's just a matter of setting up the pavers. If the road profile is the same, I wouldn't be surprised if they don't put it as wide as they can and put curb on it too. So.
Your, your closest example, probably that width you're talking about is Goldfinch in Lost River.
Yeah.
And that's big.
And that was done.
Really big.
That was done because of smaller lot.
Yeah. Yeah. But. So, so something to consider when you're talking wider road though. That's more snow that's getting pushed over into those lots. So, yeah, concerns about snow. You do a wider road. Goldfinch has a lot more snow built up than any other road in Lost River. So.
I would also just throw in there quick. People tend to drive what the road is built. They don't necessarily listen to the speed limit. The wider the road you have, the more people speed down.
Oh, please. Wall Avenue? No offense.
And maybe Corvus is, is the anomaly, but when you come into kind of the, the terms of street design, a lot of.
He gives a plan. We'll leave it at that.
Do we have any more tonight?
No, I, unless we want to turn, I mean, we can hang out because.
Council, anything else other than a promotion.